Okay, it's seven, so I don't know. Call a meeting to order. And I have to read the usual. Opening remarks. So as a preliminary matter, this is Larry Murphy, Chair of the Newbury Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Peter Pecos.
Yes.
Woody Knight.
Yes.
Scott Kinter.
Yes.
Steve Manjoe.
Yes.
Yeah, Mary Stone will not be joining us tonight. The town staff, when I call your name, please respond to the affirmative. Martha Taylor, Planning Director.
Yes.
Kristen Grubbs, Assistant Town Planner.
Yes.
And anticipated speakers and presenters on the agenda, please respond in the affirmative. John Collington.
He's.
Thank you. I see you, John. And Eric Bartman.
Yes, yes, I'm here.
This June twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four, open meeting of the Newbury Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Chapter Two of the Acts of twenty-twenty-three, which extends the governor's March twelfth, twenty-twenty, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty, until March thirty-one, twenty-twenty-five. This order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location, and allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convening by video conference via Zoom, as posted on the Planning Board's agenda, which can be found on the town's website, in which identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to http://backslashbackslashzoom.us, and entering meeting ID eight-three-two-seven-one-four-one-three-zero-five-six, passcode one-zero-eight-seven-nine-zero, or by calling one-nine-two-nine-two-zero-five-six-zero-nine-nine, and entering the meeting ID number and passcode when prompted. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that attendees are participating by video into our telephone conference. The meeting is also being broadcast live through local access cable channel nine on Zoom, and at www.tncTV.org, and the recording will be available on the Newbury Access YouTube channel. Meeting materials were provided to the board members prior to the meeting for review. Applicants or their representatives may be called upon to speak, and if needed, share information to the screen. Please state your intention after you've been called. Before we turn to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. As Chair, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of board members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, for all attendees except board members and staff, please remember to mute your computer using your mute button, or to mute your phone using star six to toggle the mute or unmute when you are not speaking. Please use earbuds or earphones with tablets and cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you, and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through me taking care to identify yourself when you wish to speak. There will be an opportunity for public comment and questions during public hearings. After board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and/or ask questions as follows. I will see questions and comments through this Zoom raised hand function. For video conference participants to raise your hand, hover over the bottom of the Zoom window below the photo gallery and click on the gray hand that appears. Please ensure your name is fully and correctly displayed on the participant list. You may rename yourself by using the more function next to your name. For telephone participants to raise your hand in a Zoom meeting, hit star nine on your phone keypad. I will then allow questions and comments from members of the public who have raised their hands in the order in which they are listed, which is determined by the order in which people click on the raised hand function. Each participant will be called on to provide his or her name and address, and then ask a question or make a comment. I will afford the applicant or participant or his or her representative the opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your questions. I will then continue down the list of those in the raised hand column, and again, afford the participant applicant or representative an opportunity to speak. Should there be a physical or electronic submittal of questions or concerns, they'll be noted for the record, and again, the participant applicant or representative will be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues raised have not yet been addressed. And finally, please note that each vote taken at this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. So, turning to the agenda, the first item on the agenda is liaison in liaison meeting reports versus the select board. Martha, do you have anything?
A couple things. The Select Board has met twice since our last meeting. They met on Tuesday, June eleventh, at which they they did make some appointments for FY twenty-five, including the appointment of Pete as the MVPC Commissioner, Larry as the MVPC Alternate Commissioner, and Steve as the Planning Board's Associate Member for one year. The other thing that happened at that meeting, Hannah Mogensen from MVPC provided a presentation on, excuse me, the Merrimack Valley Regional Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan, which we've talked about at previous meetings. That was right at the beginning or close to the beginning of the public public comment period, which actually ends on June twenty-eighth. And one reason we thought that it would be useful to do this at the Select Board meeting, not only was it televised, but also the Select Board will be adopting, voting to adopt the plan after FEMA and MEMA approve it. So it was very well received. The Select Board members had some, some great comments, so hopefully that will be moving forward and wrapped up by the end of the summer. The other meeting was actually last night, and really not, not, not too much of any great business relating to the planning board. Last night, there were some more FY twenty-five appointments, nothing, nothing really related to, to our work, so that was it.
Thank you, Martha.
You're welcome.
Next is the ZBA. ZBA met last week on June twentieth. They finalized the decision on eighty Northern Boulevard. This was a neighbor's appeal of an enforcement order request that was partly allowed and partly denied by the Building Commissioner, but they've again approved the the decision with some minor modifications, the decision of the Building Commissioner, excuse me. The other item was the request of the Merciers at thirty-one Rawls Lane to construct, construct a detached accessory apartment, and the Board voted favorably on that and directed the then a decision be prepared for review at the next meeting. And lastly, there was the public hearing on the request of George and James Simmons, Five Cinder Avenue, to raise a non-conforming single-family dwelling and garage, and to reconstruct a new single-family dwelling, and that was continued until the July, their July meeting. Sorry, and that's it for the ZBA. Conservation, Woody?
Yes, excuse me. Yes, conservation met last week. There was a lot on the agenda. The things that pertain to us, I guess, were Newbury Golf Center certificate of completion. So that went, that was passed. And then one oh eight Main Street. The sixty-day no-work order and to refile for expired EP files for the, for the lots on one oh eight Main. And then the only other thing that I recall that pertained to us was we've seen before is Sunset Club, but they, they were on the agenda, but we didn't see them. They didn't show, so other than that, those are.
Thanks, Woody. Martha, anything from MVPC?
Yeah, the Commissioners met last Thursday and June twentieth. It was pretty much just a business meeting. Adoption of minutes, payment warrants, that kind of thing, contract approvals. They did, I will say, give, give me a very nice send-off, so I very much appreciated that. I was able to go in person. It was nice to be there and see everybody. There is a planners' meeting tomorrow, also in person, and they have a number of things on the agenda, including a a report on regional economic development opportunities. There's going to be an update on MBTA communities legislation, so it'll be interesting to hear what what that's all about. Review of key components of the Affordable Homes Act, report on regional alternative transportation projects. And one of the things that actually came out of Kristen's work with the Open Space Committee to start the update of our open space plan is one of the requirements for the plan is doing an ADA audit or self-assessment for certain town-owned properties. And one other community, Boxford, has been dealing with this and having trouble getting, getting that ADA assessment done, so there's going to be an update on some, some potential help for, for that as well, so that will be, that will also be very helpful topic of discussion. And I'll just say once again, I'm continually impressed by the work that MVPC is doing and the you know, the energy of the staff and their dedication, and they're just a tremendous, tremendous asset for us as a town and as a region. So. Anyway, that's it.
Thank you, Martha. Martha, next item on the agenda is the Planning Directors' Report.
Let's see. Well, a few things. I think as Woody, as Woody mentioned, conservation, and I might have said this before, the Conservation Commission has basically closed out the Newbury Golf Center, so we have been in touch with Eric and his engineer, Scott Cameron, to get the As-Built Plan to, to us and, and start to wrap that up. They also will need to go before the Select Board to just give an update on, on what they're doing to meet the special permit requirements from that. John is here. He'll be speaking later on the one oh eight Main Street update. And Kristen and I have also been sort of going through the projects list to kind of evaluate where this, what the status is on various projects and what needs to be done to, to close out the ones that are ready for closeout. And I think other than that, I just want to take this opportunity to thank the Board so much for all your support and everything over the, the past years. It's just been a real honor to work with you all, and it's very, very mixed for me to be, having, having this be my last meeting, so. Anyway, that's, that's for me.
I, I'm sure you have very mixed emotions, Martha, as do I, quite frankly. I'm delighted for you, but sad for the rest of us, and you're going to be missed, I'm sure.
Well, I'm going to miss everybody, so. Thank you.
But maybe, maybe we can find a way to keep you around at least.
There's some discussions about that, so we'll see what happens.
Yeah.
I thought it was July twenty-five. I mean, I, Martha, this is news to me.
Yeah, we, we, we got to put up with it for another forty-eight hours, Scott.
Well, Martha, we're really, we're the ones that should be thanking you. Clearly, the town has benefited from your service, and you should be proud of it, because I think we're all proud for you. So congratulations, and I'm with, I'm with Larry. We're, you know, we're happy, but a little sad. Because now we have to work.
No, you're going to be in very, very good hands, so.
Yeah, we are fortunate to have Kristen, and I agree, but.
Absolutely.
How, how many years has it been, Martha?
Um, well, I've been working here for fifteen and a half. I've been involved really with the town since nineteen ninety-nine, when I joined the Open Space Committee, and then was on the planning board for a time, and then was, I've been fortunate enough to serve the town that I live in, and, and that's a real privilege, too. It's been a while, so twenty-five years, one way or another.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
So if I could, Larry, I didn't know what I was going to say. But I think the sentiment from this entire board is one of true appreciation. I've had the opportunity to work with a lot of organizations, a lot of executive directors, a lot of people that tried to, attempted to guide a ship. And you have been very successful in guiding the ship and navigating us through some turbulent times while maintaining complete composure to this board. And that's an attribute, and that's very much appreciated and recognized. This town has been very fortunate to be able to have someone who is so diligent and meticulous about what they do and how they care for the community. So I am very privileged and been able to work with you for the past years, and look forward to Kristen assuming the role of Director, and as Larry said, hopeful that we'll be able to continue our involvement in one way or another with the planning department, I mean, of this community, and that's all I'm going to say about that.
Well, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Well said, Pete.
And if, if I may, Martha, I'm happy for you. I'm glad that you're moving on, and you've put the time in, and you've been here. You did the job well, and you will be missed by this board, and I just wish you the best with all your other endeavors, and please feel free to stop in on a planning board meeting and visit whenever you'd like, and as Larry said, if you're if you're consulting as at part-time, that would be great as well, because you're just a wealth of knowledge on things that have happened in the past and how the process works, and just thank you so much for all your time and efforts.
Well, thank you. Again, thank you all for your, your support. I just have appreciated that so much.
Okay, well. I guess we'll move on.
We're over time for our public hearing now.
It is. We are. Yeah, we do have a public hearing on the agenda, Seven Bittersweet Lane, but we also have a request for continuance on this, and also Mary Stone is not with us, and she's in it. She would be required in order to have a quorum to, for this special permit, because there are only four eligible voting voting members. I'll get that out. So that said, would anyone, I think the request, Martha, is for our June, our July meeting, rather?
That's correct.
That's the twenty-fourth of July, right?
Yes.
So would anyone care to make a motion to continue the public hearing until our meeting of July twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four at seven fifteen PM via Zoom?
So moved.
Thank you, Woody. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Pete. Any discussion? Now, hearing on Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Scott, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So we'll take this up again in, in July. You have nothing. I'm sorry.
Excuse me, I think Scott, Scott's not a voting member on that, so.
Okay.
Although it's an administrative vote, so maybe it's fine.
Yeah, all right. Do you want me to retake it?
No.
No, okay. We'll note Scott's opinion, right? See, I'm going to miss that, Martha. Somebody's going to keep me honest.
Kristen, Kristen will be very good at doing that.
I'm sure. We've got nothing under old business, and what's that, Kristen?
I, just huge shoes to fill. I, I, I know I will not be as effective.
Well, I'm, I'm sure you're going to do great.
That particular role as Martha.
I'm sure you're going to do great, but you're right, she has twenty-five years of experience and memory with the town. Steve?
If I may, I managed to keep myself on mute, and I was trying to simply say, hear, hear, in, as my remarks about Martha leaving, so wanted to come back and say, hear, hear, and wish her all the best, and of course, wish the best to our incoming Director of Planning. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. All right, under new business, we have John Collington, Tony of Triple Q Inc., an update on one oh eight Main Street. So, John, you with us?
Yes, good evening. Thank you for having me. First off, I'd like to thank Martha and Kristen for their time in getting me in the right direction on the mistake that we made. We thought we had a pandemic extension with the whole situation, and that's on my shoulders, so I really appreciate them helping us, you know, go down the right road. Also, I want to thank Martha for all her time over the years. She spent a lot of time during this approval process, you know, helping us, and I want to wish her the best of luck, so thank you, Martha. Looking forward to working with Kristen. I've worked with Kristen in Ipswich and and looking forward to working with her here. So, we have done what we feel is some substantial work on the site, because the whole forest is down for the subdivision. And we have every intention of building the site. The Parish Road project has just drained us and taken a lot more time than we expected, and opening up the bridge was a much bigger project than we expected. So we got big shoulders. The bank has just asked us that we do a lot with one bank. They just asked us to sort of put things in pecking orders, and now this project is coming up, so the latest that would be starting this project is the spring of two thousand twenty-five, and the earliest would be October, November of two thousand twenty-four. So, I asked of the Planning Board that, you know, we could have an extension, and we'll make this as beautiful as the Planning Board and the Planning Department helped us design.
Right. John, did you, I, I understand you've got some work to do with conservation. Is that correct?
Yeah, so thank you. So we were in front of conservation their last meeting. They're very helpful, and it's just a matter of what I call the right steps. So they, they did that sixty-day thing, which we weren't going to be doing any work. Anyway, we've brought on Maureen from Noyce Environmental that will be doing all the conservation work now, because some of you might remember that we had Bill Manuel way back, and we still love Bill, but Bill isn't doing really subdivisions anymore. He's doing more individual stuff. So Maureen, who we're working with on another subdivision, is going to come in. She was at that meeting as well. And then the next step would be, you know, filing the NOIs. But we have Donahue Survey, who did all the survey work during the whole, you know, approval process, and he does most of my survey work on all our projects. They're going to be going back out there to reflag what I call the wet wetland line, and we just want to make sure that it's still the same. If it's not, then that would be a different subject for us to, to bridge. If it is, then the NOIs that we have, we'd be filing the same thing. They expect to have that done with their schedule sometime in July, and Maureen is on standby to, to take care of whatever has to be taken care of to file. So that's what's going on with conservation.
Okay, do you anticipate you might have to come back before the Planning Board for modification?
We don't. Maureen doesn't. I don't. Ted Barry, our engineer, doesn't like none of, and Adam Donahue, who's probably out in the woods more than most of us, he doesn't expect it either. But because of how long it's been, even if we weren't, you know, expired, would still be doing, checking the, the wetland line anyway. So, so we don't foresee that, but Kristen would be, would, would tell Kristen immediately if we think there's some type of modification that has to be done.
Okay, because I know you, you have a performance covenant, which has a completion date of February seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three, so that will need to be extended. Let me turn to the board members and see if they have any questions. Peter, do you have any questions?
No, John is, I'm glad that you're back on the radar screen here. I was just getting a little concerned with the site, and I know that you have another project that might be coming down the pike in Riley, and I just hope that that doesn't create any spreading too thin situation, so I'll just articulate that now.
I, I appreciate that, and it won't, because that's just, we won't even be in the building stage in that for, for a while, because we haven't even started the approval process.
Great, thanks.
Woody, do you have anything?
Just a comment that, you know, hopefully, as you say, things go well and conservation goes well, and you can begin work this fall and get the, get the site under control and get on, on your way to completion, so thank you. That's all.
Thanks, Woody. Scott, anything?
I have no questions.
No, Steve?
No questions. Look forward to moving forward.
Okay, thank you. So Martha, what would, what's our next step? Do we need to perhaps request a new Form D with, with an extended completion date and put that back before the Board? Or do you think we're ready for a vote of some, some sort tonight?
Well, I think, I don't know, John, if you would be ready to sort of reach an agreement with the Board tonight about an extension, you know, completion date for a revised Form D.
I have no, I have no problem if, if, if the Board's willing to do that. Save me some time, save the Board some time. I, I have, I have no issue with that if we're able to discuss it.
And it wasn't, it wasn't on the agenda, but it is kind of germane to the, the discussion. I think, I'm not sure, but I think what would have to happen would be if, if you and the Board come to an agreement on a date, then we'd need to get a new, a new Form D that would be executed by you and, and recorded at the registry.
Yeah, that, that would be fine. I agree.
So what, what date would you be looking for?
Well, if we, if we could go three years from what the extension date was, you know, from what the expiration date was, I, I think we would be in great shape.
Well, what's the feeling of the Board, Pete?
Yeah, I, I'd like, I'd rather see two years, to tell you the truth. I'd like to see this project completed sooner than later, because it's been sitting in quite some time, so that's kind of where I'm coming from, John.
Right, and, and I understand what you're saying, but if we, and, and in case I'm wrong in my dates, but February two thousand twenty-three, if we go three years from that, it's, it's really less than two years from now. If I'm doing my math correctly.
So you're looking for February of twenty-six?
Correct.
What do you think, Pete?
I'm thinking on it. Go ahead. I'll pass for a couple minutes.
Woody, your thoughts?
Well, that being, what was just said, being said, I, I agree with Pete as far as more of a two-year plan here. We've been open for three years, and the site's been the way it is for a while, but a three-year extension from the February expiration date could be possible, because it is going to take time to complete this project, so that's my opinion.
Okay, Scott, any thoughts?
I guess, I, I guess I'm not that familiar with the project, but you know, I would you know, submit to the, the other members of the Board, you know, I think it is relevant that we're not talking three years from today. You know, we're talking three years from February twenty-three, right? So, is it February from, February twenty-three, three years from that?
That, that was my suggestion, because even with that, it's going to give us, I'm just rounding things off a little bit. It's only gonna give us twenty months to complete the project and what's left to do there. Um, you know, is pretty substantial in, in the twenty months.
No, I'll give you more than that, John, to give you.
Right, could I ask a question?
I'm sorry. But you know, I, I think it's about two and a half years, isn't it, from today?
No, well, twenty six, if, if it's three years.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You're right. You're absolutely right. Yeah, it's only about twenty months.
Right, it is twenty months. And if John actually doesn't start until March of twenty five, that's only a year.
Now that, then that, does that meet your concerns, Pete?
It does.
Yeah, my, my math was off. I'm sorry.
Hey, could I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, if I guess this is from Martha, if this uh, if we grant it to the February of twenty six, correct? We, um, whether he starts this fall or in the spring. If for some reason he designed for city things, but he's made significant progress, he can always file for another exception with us if he doesn't have time, right?
I believe so, yes. I don't think there's any limit on extensions. And that's based, I mean, the performance bond is basically for the um, installation, construction of the roadway and installation of municipal utilities. And it may, obviously, it's up to John as the applicant or the developer to choose the form of security, but you know, it may be appropriate at some point to convert it from the Form D, the covenant on the lots, to a tripartite agreement or a bond or something within that, that time period as well, so.
You, you're a hundred percent, what you just said, Martha, you're a hundred percent correct, would probably go to a tripartite i- i- in the future. You know, obviously with the permission of the board.
Right, right. So at what point do you think you might do that?
I think, and, and Martha, please help me out if I describe this incorrectly, because this is what I've done at past sites. So we can't really get a building permit to build a house until a tripartite would be in place with a roadway that's, you know, that you can go down. Um, and so when we're ready for that part, because we may have some people that want to buy a lot for us to buy, to, to build a house for them. We can't sell a lot until we have that in place with the town. So when we get the road cut in and we can start, you know, we're to the point where we can start potentially pulling a building permit, that's when I foresee doing that. And that's what we usually do with the other towns.
Right, so, so you at that point would request a, a full release of the performance covenant and convert that into a tripartite?
Yes. A- again, with the approval of, of course, the board.
Right, right.
Okay, any further discussion? Then uh, I, I think what I'm hearing is it might be appropriate um, for someone to move to extend the, the um, um, the completion date uh, to February seventeenth, twenty twenty six, uh, subject to uh, to the uh, uh, submission of an updated Form D. Anyone care to make that motion?
So moved, but quick, quick question. Does, when conservation weighs in, if something changes with the wetlands flagging? Um, I guess that doesn't affect the extension, then it would only be, we, they'd have to come back if there were some serious changes with the wetlands flag, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. It would be a modification to the plan or substantial. It might be more than that, so.
Okay, so we'll do that. Really gonna be driven by conservation.
Okay, well, so moved on the motion then. Thank you for.
Uh, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Pete. Any discussion? All right, then on the motion, Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Scott, how do you vote?
Martha, am I authorized to vote?
Yes, you are.
Yeah.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. But thank you for checking. Okay, all right, John, I guess we're good for tonight and good luck with it.
All right, thank you so much. I appreciate everyone's time. And Martha, again, thank you for everything and best of luck.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next we have Eric Bartman, uh, Millennium Engineering regarding three Newbury Port Turnpike. The owner Bavaro Family Trust Two LLC. So I believe we have a request for extension of time for completion. And uh, which is currently extended to July thirty one, twenty twenty four. And also a request for modification. So John, can you bring us up to Eric? I'm sorry, bring us up to speed.
Sure, um, good evening, Eric Bartman, Millennium Engineering. Um, I'm sure you all drive by the site and see that there isn't a whole lot going on. Um, and the reason there isn't is because unfortunately, uh, Joe Bavaro, who is the owner, has um, had to engage a new contractor. The contractor he had um, wasn't performing, obviously, as you could see from the site. Um, so he's in the process of doing that. So the project has been delayed. Um, we're, we're hoping that he can start construction in the next couple of months as he negotiates with the existing contractor in his, had, he actually has hired, excuse me, a new contractor to finish the site. Um, so we respectfully request a extension of time for another year and hopefully it'll give him enough time to get it done.
Yeah, I thought it was actually, excuse me, I thought it was an extension for two years to.
I, okay.
Yeah, I've got it.
Years would be better. Two years would certainly be better.
Right, your, um, well, actually, it was TJ's letter was to July thirty first, twenty twenty six.
Oh, okay. I thought it was twenty twenty five. Yeah, so would, well, I guess we'd like the extension for two years. That would certainly be better. Um, that way we wouldn't have to be back here next year. Um, in case he hasn't had, doesn't have everything done.
Hey, uh, Pete, any questions?
No questions, thanks.
No, Woody?
No questions. Thank you.
Scott, anything?
Um, not that we have any purview, um, you know, over, over this, but um, he's terminated the site contractor. Um, it's what it sounds like. I mean, is there any lien claims or, you know, mechanic liens or has it been, you know, uh, a smooth termination or?
I, I, I guess I really don't know. I would expect that there is, it's probably not as clean as everybody would like. You know, they, those things never end cleanly. Um, but I really don't know. I don't believe there's any liens, but I honestly, I don't know.
Okay. Other questions?
Okay, um, Steve, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Um, Martha, is any reason that we ought not to, uh, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but any, any concerns about, uh, that you have about granting an extension?
No, I think based on what, uh, you know, what Eric has conveyed, if um, hopefully all of this can get sorted out and they can start moving forward on the project again soon. I think that um, you know, if the extension isn't granted, um, I, I don't think that really benefits anybody.
I agree. Thank you. Therefore, would anyone care to move to grant the extension for completion of this project until July thirty one, twenty twenty six?
So moved.
Thank you, Woody. Um, second?
Third.
Thank you, Scott. Any discussion? And hearing none, Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Scott, how do you vote?
Yes.
Now I vote yes as well, so. You've got your extension, Eric. Um, now I understand there's a request for modification, but uh, there needs to be some um, additional work done on the plan. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. Um, we were in the process of getting some additional information from the architect. Um, and we, I know TJ ran some calculations for the pond, but we still have to uh, submit all that stuff to you guys for review. So we hope, we hopefully will, we'll be giving that to you in the next week or two.
Okay, all right. Well, we don't need, we don't need to pick a date right now, uh, but uh, because it's not a public hearing. So yeah, just get it to us and we'll get it on the agenda as soon as we can.
Yes, thank you very much. And if I may, um, I, I wanna echo everybody else's sentiments. Thanks to Martha. Um, we've been doing a lot, you know, a lot of years working in town and she's always been very professional and and helpful to everybody trying to get projects done and approved and uh, successfully built. So really appreciate all your time, Martha.
Well, thank you. I appreciate how responsive you guys have always been to makes it, makes it much easier at our end.
Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
And next item on the agenda is the uh, uh, customary in uh, June to um, reorganize and elect the planning board officers effect of July first. Uh, unfortunately, we don't have a full board tonight and I don't know um, how the board would feel about going forward with this without Mary's presence, just at least as a courtesy to her.
I would concerto with that.
Yeah, yeah, my, my in- inclination, I, I doubt that Mary would be offended, but I think just as a courtesy, we might put this off until our July meeting.
Agreed.
Good.
Okay, all right. I don't think we need a formal vote on that. Uh, next is, well, the next uh, would be designation of authorized signatories for A and R's plans, invoices and payroll. And that, that would need to wait uh, likewise for the reorganization. Cause right now Pete and I are authorized to do that. And until there's a change, we, we can continue to, to function uh, fulfill those functions. And the next item on the agenda are um, liaison positions for the select board and ZBA. Um, I've been um, uh, the liaison to the ZBA for several years. Now I'm happy to, to continue. Um, however, our liaison to the select board is retiring. So we, we will need to um, uh, uh, fill that position. Uh, again, I don't know if this is something that we want to take up tonight or just hold off until the July meeting. Anyone have any thoughts on that?
I think holding off to July meeting makes all the sense in the world.
Yeah, I was, you know, I had my thoughts. Uh, and who is um, the liaison now that's retiring?
Martha. Oh, who else is retiring, right? Well, we, we still, we still have to vote before the end of the night as to whether or not we approve her retirement, so. And it's, it's a super majority too, I think.
Yeah, we're gonna have to wait until like.
I think we should probably uh, push everything till next meeting.
All right, that makes sense, I think. But it gives some thought, uh, if anyone would like to uh, to be the select board liaison, or for that matter, ZBA. If someone else has an interest in it, I'm happy to step aside. I've been doing it long enough, but I, I kind of enjoy the meetings, to tell you the truth. So last.
I, I would only just ask that, you know, maybe Kristen think about, um, you know, if she's interested in that uh, liaison uh, spot.
Yeah, I was just, I was just gonna make a comment. So thanks, Scott, for queuing me up. Um, I think uh, I'm very happy to stay connected to the select board. I think that will be happening anyway. Um, I uh, I know Martha has attended most select board meetings, even you know, those that may not have an actual planning board related project on. And I think it's a really good way to sort of follow what's happening in the town and, you know, hear about things that you might miss otherwise. So I think it's um, it's pretty uh, critical for planning to understand what is happening with select board conversations. Um, so I'm happy to play that role. I, I sort of also would welcome if any of the select board, of, of any of the planning board members are sort of interested in being the liaison to the board. I think, you know, obviously I'll be very connected, but I um, I know in the past there have been planning board members. In fact, I think one of them is on our call with us tonight. So Leslie might have some comments related to this, but um, but just, you know, happy to talk with people, happy to be the liaison, happy if another planning board member wants to sort of more officially be that liaison. Um, I think we'll, we'll certainly stay connected, so.
Great, Kristen, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so we'll, we'll take up all these at our next meeting when we hopefully have a full board at that point. Great, um, the last item on the agenda of the meeting minutes, has everyone had an opportunity to review the May fifteenth, twenty twenty four meeting minutes?
Yes.
Yes, and uh, does anyone have any uh, questions or comments about the May fifteenth minutes? All right, hearing none, would anyone care to move to approve the May fifteenth, twenty twenty four minutes as drafted and presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Woody. Do we have a second?
You have a second.
Thank you, Peter. Any further discussion? Oh, then Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, Scott, how do you vote?
Yes.
Now I vote yes as well. Uh, and likewise, we have the June fifth, twenty twenty four meeting minutes. Has any, everyone had an opportunity to review those? I'm seeing a lot of heads nodding. Uh, any questions or comments?
None.
No. Uh, um, then would anyone care to make a motion to approve the June fifth, twenty twenty four um, meeting minutes as uh, presented? Anybody?
So moved.
Thanks, Woody. And second?
Second.
Thank you, Scott. Uh, any discussion? All right, here, hearing none. Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Scott, how do you vote?
Yes, yes.
And I vote yes as well. So those two meeting minutes are approved. The last item uh, is a report on the meeting minute approvals from January fifth, September twenty one and October fifth of twenty twenty two. Um, Scott, this, this predates your involvement with the board, but you, the rest of us might recall that we did get behind on some of our meeting minutes. And uh, some time ago, the board authorized me as chair. Uh, this was after consultation with town council. This was according uh, an appropriate way to go. Uh, authorized me as chair to review the older meetings and approve them. Uh, so this is just a report that I have reviewed and approved the January fifth, twenty twenty two, September twenty one, twenty twenty two and October fifth, twenty twenty two uh, meeting minutes. Um, just to point for the future, uh, if, when, when we do reorganize, uh, we might uh, need to think about um, renewing that vote. Uh, assuming I'm not chair. The vote was, was to approve to, as I remember it, was to authorize me as chair to review these meeting minutes. Um, I'm happy if I'm no longer chair after the reorganization. I'm happy to continue on and, and complete that task. But I think we'll probably need a new vote and to authorize that. So we, we can take that up again on, on July twenty fourth. Martha, for the last time, anything further you'd like to add before we adjourn?
I don't think so, except thank you all again so much.
Okay, and Kristen, anything you'd like to add?
Um, no, big shoes to fill. I, I will be very much in touch with Martha. She's been an incredible mentor to me and our, our working together predates the year and a half that I've been working for Newberry. So um, you know, we've we've been working together and learning from each other and bouncing ideas off each other and talking, planning, shop for a long, long time. And I, I know that will continue. Um, so.
I'm sure it will. And I have to say.
Looking forward to it.
You were a great addition to the staff and we're delighted to have you as uh, as our new planner, so.
Agreed. Uh, Larry, I'm gonna say one more thing. I've been in the real estate business for probably too long. Um, and I have um, been part of the planning process of countless projects and um, had um, you know, been in front of planning boards, zoning boards, conservation commissions. Um, you know, the DEP, you name it. And uh, and this is completely, Martha, you are the most and this is completely, Martha, you are the most thoughtful and thorough planning administrator that I have ever, I would say, partnered with. You know, whether being on the other side of the fence or being on the board. So, I mean, you might be the best of the best, so, thank you. You're a wonderful servant, person that, or planner that served, you know, this town remarkably well for, you know, twenty plus years, so hopefully that you won't disappear. Meaning, get a place up the mountains, you know, we're in good hands, but you are an incredible leader. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for that, I'm gonna start crying soon, but anyway, thank you, I really appreciate that, it's been, it's been a real pleasure.
Excellent.
All right, well, all of that said, and would anyone care to move to adjourn?
So.
Thank you, Scott, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Woody. Any further discussion, and hearing none, Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Scott, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so good night, everyone, thank you all. We'll see you next month.